Anybody rise from the place?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the justice of all.
One second, you're not meeting until seven o'clock.
So I'm getting justice and liberty and everything.
Thank you.
I think that's why I was still on the old meeting when Brett couldn't get out.
We have to wait for the zoom to start. Is everything loaded? We are. No meeting order, roll call.
Okay. Mr. Westerberg?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mulher?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Wolton?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Anybody here for public forum? Okay, we move on to consent agenda. Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Thank you.
Roll call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mulher?
Yes.
Wolton?
Yes.
Okay, we have two building permits, all been signed.
Yes.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mulher?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Wolton?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Administrator report?
Yeah, just my first thing there is Outlet Twenty, I did want to just have this discussion with you about about that cleanup. I do have a proposal, but I'm getting another proposal, so I prefer we not discuss the dollars. But my main question to you is, what would you, if you look at that, do you want to remove the trees or are we just raiding the lot?
It could be much more attractive if it's a clear lot.
I would agree with that.
Okay, I am going to get another price and then I would go ahead and get under contract with the low provider and get things rolling on that and would remove the trees if that's what I'm hearing.
And then when they get done, like they're going to level it all up, so then we can seat it down. If they can seat it down, of course.
Yeah, so this was to, yeah, get it basically all leveled down so that it can be seated and taken care of for the summer.
The motion take the low bit, can you continue on?
So moved.
Second? Roll call.
Is this to remove all the trees in it? Is that what we're talking about?
Everything.
Okay, Mulher?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Wolf? Yes.
We have a rag break committee.
Hey, no, I got a couple other things, John. What are you doing? You can't rush that quick.
I just want to get through this.
Another one on money related, we do have a couple of dead cottonwood trees at the entry to the beach. And I would look to have those trees removed and meet with another contractor tomorrow and, you know, it's got another contractor that we would have come down and take a look also. So, you know, just knowing that it's going to be $4,000 more to have those two trees removed. I just want to make sure everybody's on board with that. We would take a little bit and get them going because they are getting to the point where it's pretty dangerous there.
Four thousand dollars would be pretty cheap if somebody got hurt.
Okay. Couple things with me, I'll be on vacation next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, going to the Chicago Cubs game.
Sorry.
I'm looking forward to that, that'll be great. And Zach County League is next Thursday, the 11th, at the Wall Lake Community Center. And actually, it would be the same night then as Northwest Iowa. So, yeah, because Northwest Iowa is a week earlier. But, yeah, next week, Thursday, Wall Lake Community Center.
What's the date of that?
11th.
We need a head comb?
We should probably RSVP, I think. Yeah, if you have a big catering, I'm sure. So, yeah, let me know for sure who's able to go. Chief, anything?
Yeah, so Cody resigned. I think everybody got a letter. As of right now, I, we have one guy that we interviewed last time that we didn't hire. I reached out to him through email. We've already done a background check on him and everything. So just to be, kind of update that record a little bit, but he's going to come and meet with me tomorrow. So hopefully, you know, see where he's at and kind of go from there as far as filling that spot. But I'd still like to kind of open it up, just in case, at least advertise for that part-time help. Especially with the summer coming up, we got to get out at the academy. He definitely could use a little bit of help.
So Holden left for the academy on Sunday and then he's gone for 16 weeks, right?
Yeah, yeah. He'll check in every Friday and I know like this coming weekend, he's going to have some shit he's going to have to come in and do, excuse me, some stuff he's going to have to come in and do. But, yeah, we'll play by weekend. He knows he's got to work watercarn over the weekend a little bit. Whenever else we need him to come, he'll be there, so.
I guess I would intend that we would get some advertisement out for a full-time officer, for sure, and get something out there for part-time certified guys, or are you picking up the certified part?
Certified guys, yeah. Part-time certified.
Okay. You know, as far as wages go, we had reevaluated that here within the year and we use that wage structure. So we would get applications out here, or advertisements out quickly, out of time to part-time.
Do you need a motion on that, or?
Yeah, no, actually, it's not an agenda item. I have a motion, I'll just.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you, thank you, Cody, I'll be thanking for his service.
Yes.
Yeah, he's got, it's good opportunities going on tonight, so better department, more opportunities formed, so hopefully he'll be good.
More action.
More action. He won't be busy.
Thanks, Chief.
Yep.
Thank you.
That is it, that is it.
Okay, now we can go for the rag break committee report. Dave?
Basically, the committee has been meeting every other week. I missed, of course, the last meeting. That was in Ohio. But the only thing really to update right now so far is vendors. We have about 24 potential vendors that have reached out to us, so that's moving along quite nicely. Different types of dessert type stands and so forth. Hannah has given the locals a heads up that she'd like to have their apps in this week. So if anybody out there is thinking about getting their apps in, get them in so we could, once we get more vendors than what we need, we could start taking out some duplicates and such. Volunteers, yes, we're going to need a lot of volunteers. As soon as we get that part organized, we'll be really pushing to get more volunteers for each of the different parts, moving parts we have. So really, that's all we have for an update right now and every council meeting, I'm planning to give a little bit of an update as.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have any questions for the rag break committee? Anybody want to volunteer? Okay, we have, next item is the preliminary plat on Lakewood Estates. Been to the P and Z twice.
Yeah, so the Planning and Zoning Commission has met twice on this. They met in a regular meeting to consider this site plan and the preliminary plat. And they then requested that they would take a field trip, they called it. And they requested that the property pins and the road be staked out in the area so that they could really visualize what this would look like then. And really, we're really looking at how close is the road then to the adjacent properties on the south side there. So the Planning and Zoning did consider this and the Planning and Zoning would make a recommendation that the preliminary plat not be approved. Have talked more with Scott Lyndon about this. He did ask that it would come to the council. With that, though, the Planning and the P and Z's comments on the subdivision were, they were having real concerns about that south access, okay? The concept of the subdivision there in general still could work out, but they would look at a different access to them. And of course, the one that's talked about the most is the east, which is the Carstens. And I talked with Steve today and it looks like we would not be proceeding down that road as an option now. So really looking at different types of accesses, it's very, very limited. And again, the Planning and Zoning would make a recommendation not to approve the plat.
Did Lakewood Partners say anything about the plan for snow removal or what their plan was for a dedicated area with the cul-de-sac? We talked about it.
Nothing, yeah, nothing.
I know that was talked about at one of the meetings.
And I know they had, because we had talked about more about the notion that I'm sure some of the heavy snow has to get hauled out of there and that was basically, yeah, they did not have any plan, yeah.
They don't haul out a design circle, we don't haul out horse shoe bags?
Well, only in worst case scenarios, we have stockpiled it in people's driveways if we were going.
Right, this development is a little bit different than that, too, because of the size and the. Number of homes. Number of homes and potential number of homes and potential driveway accesses, which are ain't much room to build with snow, so. I just know it was talked about one of the meetings, I don't know if we're there or not, so that's what I was asking.
I'm going to make a motion that we take the recommendation of the planning.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Okay, Wolton?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mulher?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
So I guess as far as this goes, you know, the plat would be denied. To reinvigorate it would be to start back at the beginning of the plat process, but, I mean, it just seems pretty obvious that there would need to be something different addressed as far as the access. Hate to not have a successful housing development, but there was a lot of concern about that south access.
Okay. Good to go. Thanks for coming.
Thank you for your time.
No clapping is necessary going.
But if you want to volunteer, you want to rag break.
There.
Where's that pizza you're looking for?
Okay, resolution 2324. For the beds on the pond.
Yeah, so what this would do is set bid letting date then on the retention pond from the proposed community center. Just looking at that then.
I have a question. I missed the last meeting, so I apologize, but that engineer planned for that 300 by 60 or 90 foot deep pond, was that done with the community center was projected a hard surface, parking lot and so forth?
It's.
That's an enormous pond.
All of the calculations for this pond that are based upon the notion of a crush rock, crush rock parking lot. Now, I think they'll also tell you that the runoff of the crush rock parking lot and concrete or other hard surface would be about the same.
It just seems like that's an extreme amount of pond for the size of the deal compared to, for example, the partner to the north, Evapco. I mean, that's the size of a football field, so. And if the community center's never built, now we've got a football field pond out there.
Well, that's what Deuce and Ken said, to take care of the water, right?
Back in the.
Yeah, but we all know that the water is taken care of in a hayfield better than a retention pond. Or as well, it's filtered for the water that runs over it. And now we're ruining, depending on what would happen, if the community center's not built, now we're putting pond there where something may be built for future.
I thought this was supposed to help the water clarity.
Again, this is going to stop the water from going past there and collecting the pond and create mosquitoes. A hayfield is way more better of a filter than a retention. Hence why they're trying to do the inlet like they are. I think it needs to be re-engineered, reevaluated, re-looked at. They're just, that's the size of a football field, eight to nine foot deep, depending on how you look at the plants. Think about that. Are we going to end up putting a fence around it then?
You're spending $300,000 on a $100,000 piece of property.
We're just going to the agricultural department and everything, right?
Yeah, it is. You know, that's part of the reason why it's designed as it is. You know, there are certain criteria that the water feature needs to meet as far as water clarification. So, you know, it's got to have so much detention or it's got to have so much treatment that would occur during the detention time. So, you know, it actually had some.
It's going to have water sitting in it all the time.
It will, yes.
Constantly going to have water sitting, the way the plans were that I see. I just think it needs to be re-looked at, reevaluated, or put on hold until we know we've got all the money for the community center. And if that's what the whole community center group wants, is a big football field retention pond, eight foot deep or nine foot, depending on how you look at it.
I think it's what the DNR and the Department of Agriculture express their desire for.
That was their design for you guys to meet the grant, is what Scott just said. And that's in there.
If I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's just the, I mean, we didn't have any decision really as far as, you know, what actually went there. It's all the initiative.
We do have that. We do have that. It's our ground. We can decide what we want to do with the ground. We don't have the decision to make on it.
But this is what we've helped engineer to get the grant and everything and stuff. I mean, that's what we came up with.
I agree that the water runs down that field and that there needs to be something there to slow the water down or stop it or whatever. Do I agree that it needs to be 60 or 90 foot wide by 300 foot by eight foot deep? Absolutely not. Do I think a guy can go in there, John Healy could go in there with an excavator and spend $25,000 to burn him up and it would stop all the water going over that way? That's my opinion.
That's your opinion?
Yep.
Are you an engineer?
Not on ground, but let me tell you, I do look at engineer plans all day, every day. And I get them from certified engineers on petroleum equipment and they have in their specs of engineered plans of outdated products. So, that's how I think.
I just thought you had experts and, I mean, this was, you know, decided by engineers that are more qualified than I am.
Qualified per state requirements and DNR requirements. I'm saying, common sense will tell you, we can do things a lot cheaper, a lot better out there to stop the water running off of a natural grown hayfield than a 30, 60, 90.
A hayfield is natural, by the way.
Well, natural filtration. It's going to have filtration, just like the inlet. I'm going to make a motion that we deny the resolution 2324 on doing this and come up with our plan.
I'll second that. Give me a motion to deny it, 2324. Roll call?
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Mulher?
No.
Stankin?
No.
Wolton?
No.
You guys are going to be the ones paying for this when it comes back.
There's a motion to approve 2324. So go. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Dave, Wolton?
Yes.
Mulher?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Beckman?
No.
Frank?
No.
Okay, John Droyne is volunteered to be on the Board of Adjustment. We have a motion to approve him.
So moved.
I'll second. Roll call.
One second, so Tammy?
Yeah.
Thank you, Brett.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Mulher?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Wolton?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Okay, we've got to pay for some 175 Water Main Project. Pay estimate number two.
Yeah, so this will be passed by number two on that Evapco Water Main Project. This one's, the total is 113,000. Any update, Dean, you want to, you have on status out there?
We're trying to find, we found all the valves today because there's a fire, excuse me, fire hydrant on the six inch on the north side of 175. They want to add to the 12 inch. We've got to shut off one, two, three, four valves. Hopefully they work. If they don't, probably going to have to put in a cut-in valve right there by Cook siding to the six inch that's coming across so that we can get that shut off to have them move that fire hydrant over. Next week, they want to do the tie-in at the water plant and by the end of the week, do the tie-in at Evapco so that they can.
We just got the water tower down, Cook left?
The water tower and then the tie-in out to, and then that hydrant right there.
So as far as the project goes and any potential change orders, there have been two that have been forwarded to me as potential change orders. Nothing's been approved by the engineers. And that first one was that extended bore under the highway was the first one that we talked about a while back. Second one is the replacement of a culvert through a private drive that, as they dug it up, their contention would be that the culvert should not be replaced as is, that they replaced it with new material. So they've requested change order, and it's like $7,000 for that second change order. But again, the engineer has not approved that and has requested additional information.
We have a motion to pay estimate number two? Second? I'll second. Roll call.
Mulher?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Wolton?
Yep.
Beckman?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
We also need a motion on the reimbursement request number two from the EDA.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Beckman?
Yes.
Mulher?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Wolton?
Yep.
Frank?
Yes.
Okay, we've got to pay some more bills for the Water Main Loop Project, pay estimate number one.
This one actually was about a smooth project as it goes. They got that thing installed very, very quickly. And what's status of it then, Dean, as far as it turned on?
As soon as they come back to do some dirt work, they will open the valves and it's all set to go. The bacteria test came back good for no bacteria. It's ready to be opened.
So they had it open to pressurize and check everything?
To pressurize, check it, and it all came back good.
Close everything off?
Then they closed everything up, so it's just sitting there waiting for them to get back down here to open up the valves.
Then all they got left to do is.
Dirt work, yeah. And figure out if they're going to do asphalt on Jackson or just pour some concrete and kind of mask up.
To the north of the school.
Yeah, north of the school where they cut it.
We have a motion to approve pay estimate number one. I'll make that motion. Second? Roll call.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Wolton?
Yep.
Stankin?
Yes.
Mulher?
Yes.
Okay, we want to talk about truck for the electric department. Jeff, you want to tell us?
That's basically the truck we talked about earlier on, doing a duly to replace that F-350 that's on the back that we've used pretty much every day.
Is there a long wait time to get this?
Two years?
It was going to be, if we were going to order it at the beginning of the year, it could have been here like in the fall because they had to build it. But after so long, then they shut down the building of those trucks because they only have so many colors or something that they do per year. So if you ordered it now, it might get here beginning of next year or so. Unless they're, unless like somebody might have one on a lot that somebody else canceled or something that might be able to get.
So which one are we replacing then?
That '06 with that six liter diesel, that Ford extended cab.
F-350. That's got the box on it, utility box?
Yeah.
And you're not putting the utility box back on it?
We want to put a flat bed on it.
The purpose, I'm just curious what purposes?
Well, we carry them extra hose for that back and then if we ever need to throw a transformer on it, we can, you know, throw a smaller transformer on it. We just thought it'd be handier with that. And we'll get rid of that extended cab for the shorter wheel, little shorter wheel base returning with that trailer stuff would be a little handier to do.
And be using it also for the jetter, sewer jetter, hook it up there.
Do we need a 450? I mean, you're spending quite a bit more for a 450 compared to the 350.
Just putting all that weight on that back of that truck, the suspension would be a lot better. It sags that 350, it's on now, but I guess that was the purpose to go into a duly. I guess we could check back with the two.
Yeah, because I got the price from Carroll on 450 and then that other guy.
The other price was AVM, which is a body builder, a truck builder that builds, that built our bucket truck.
Is that the one on the very?
Yeah.
Didn't they both say they're on the very?
I, yeah, both of these prices that I listed were from AVM, just as.
Oh.
Yeah, the one from Carroll is exactly the same price as 450.
Oh, okay. And that Carroll Ford?
Yeah. Yeah.
So what direction would the council like to go? How many miles are on that 350?
Little over 100,000. It's already had three turbos stuck in it, I thought. If you talk to Denny about it up there at the gas station, he'd be the happiest one of everybody to see a bell.
And that's not a duly, right?
No.
What kind of shape is that utility box in on that?
It's in good shape. I mean, we did kick around keeping it and putting it on that other one, but you can't because it's.
Like nine foot long?
It's a single, it's a single wheel versus that duly wheel.
Yeah, so it's not as wide as what a duly would be and then it's also short. The duly would be shorter, have the eight foot box instead of the nine foot.
So we don't even pull that trailer that's got the mini on it, the mini act, too?
Yeah, well, if we could, I mean, we also have another, have a 550, too. That's usually what's hooked to the mini.
Right.
A lot of times when we have the mini out, we've got the back out, too.
Do you think, I understand why you're going to the non-extended cab, but yet, do you use, and I haven't looked at the pickups, I don't know, but I'm wondering, do you want the extended cab for storing stuff inside or if you're going to, you know, tools, whatnot, have you?
We talked about putting a box under the bed for a little bit of storage stuff. You know, one in front of the front wheel or back wheel.
Do we have a price on what the difference is between a 350 and 450?
No, both. Sure we get one.
But you're saying the 450 would better suit your needs, is what you're saying than the 350?
We just, we looked at going to a 450 because the 350 we already have is already sagged. So I guess that's the reason or the suspension, but the duly.
A duly 350 would serve the same.
Probably, and it probably would.
I don't know if there's $500 price difference.
I don't, yeah, we never, we just never even.
That'd be my curiosity.
Do we get those prices and have it next week?
Which one's the 550? Which, which one's the 550, that one?
That's the one Trent and Austin drive all the time. What happened was we had the, when I started, we had a gas regular cab that Clayton Petcharlo's got now. That was our service truck, so in oh-six, we bought this F-350. We went to the diesel because that other thing was terrible on fuel.
Right.
So, but basically what we've done in the past is move them on down and eventually get them out of the fleet.
Right.
And that's where we're at with that.
So you got the oh-six and then that we're gonna update, and then what's the, and then you got the one that Trent drives, what's that?
That's a seventeen.
That's a seventeen.
Yeah.
And then...
You won't look at doing that until...
Right.
Twenty-seventh, twenty-seven or twenty-eight.
And then you got, um, what other one?
The Mytra is a seventeen.
And I... And that's just the regular?
Regular cab, yep, F-150. I don't, bill always was big on the F-150. Personally, if it had been me, that'd have been a 250 for what we do with it. But that's, a few years down the road for you.
I know there's a big jump in price from the 150 to 250, but I don't know how much there is between the 350 and 450.
You can sure check into that, Dale.
Yeah, and I'm, we gotta have the right equipment and that's got a hundred and some thousand miles on it. That should have some good value if we sell it. Or would you, what would you do if it was to be updated? Get it out of the fleet?
I think I would get it out of the fleet, just, uh, Denny's had it up there probably three or four times trying to get the oil liquidated. Leaks on that brand-new shop floor, we got the floor dry under there. I...
Seeing its better days.
It's, it's...
Right.
Looks like big one there.
Exactly, and then, I might get shot for saying this, but looking through the specs, when you're living in that pickup all day long, gotta make sure you've got, I'm begging driver comfort. I don't know what options you're getting on it, but I wouldn't get just the bare bubble pickup. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
We don't need, we don't need a chromed out package or nothing like that, but we want the driver convenience for the workers.
We did, uh, when we did the, seeing that pickup, that F-350 is window crank, no, no power, no power mirrors, no, nothing.
That, that should be...
When we went to the 550, we, we went to power windows and...
And when we talked, and we went and got prices on the 450, we said, you want the electric windows, electric everything.
Perfect.
Uh, it comes with backup camera, everything.
That 550 is not an XLT, it's, it's a high-end XL.
I just, you, you're, you're in them vehicles all day long and most of the time people sit back here and say, why do you need all that stuff for? But it's the convenience of a worker having it.
The biggest thing I want, you know, with that tracking mud in and out of that all the time, we want the hard mat more. I don't put carpet in any of them trucks.
So we're just gonna wait and see what the price difference is?
Yeah, we can, we can get on that.
Price of Chevy out as well, because if they got them?
Yeah. In the past, Chevy's never been close.
I know, but again, this one's an oh-six with a hundred and some thousand miles on it, put three turbos in it.
Yeah.
That front top, not even more than that.
Right. We tried to go, when we did the F-550, we tried to, we think we bid Chevy and if you went in them bigger trucks like that, Chevy goes to that big cab. That's why we stayed away from them.
Yeah. You have to go to the, I think, the three...
Would have to be the 3500 or about where you'd have to be to...
Yeah.
I'll get some prices and we'll see next month.
Okay.
Beginning of the month. Okay, uh, street sweeper, consider purchase of. They were here.
Yeah, so that, uh, at, at your, uh, at your chair tonight was a little more information about that used street sweeper. So they, they had brought that, uh, here last Friday and you're gonna see a little bit more about what the options and, and whatnot that it has on this, which is a 2014 machine. Um, I had told you 2016 erroneously, but, uh, 2014, but you'll talk through it a little bit there, Dean?
Uh, so the used piece of equipment is, uh, the mare and whitey seen it run, uh, picks up sand really nice, picks up leaves out of the gutters really nice. Um, it was reconditioned, um, you should have the, what they did to it here on the cost of reconditioning, um, everything that they put into it, uh, when they did it. Um, the stainless steel is the way to go, I mean, lasts forever as long as we're gonna be around. It's, the used one is, you know, pretty much kind of half the price and, um, I've dealt with this gentleman before on, uh, street sweepers, same, uh, 600, uh, street sweeper, Tim Cole, excuse me, um, up in Manson, uh, bought it 12 years ago, it's still running, still looks good, as long as you keep that oil changed and everything. Um, the front engine is a Max Force, um, you know, did some talking and stuff, it's... So when we started looking at the, uh, dump truck up Minnesota, the red one, they had a Max Force, we did some talking and stuff and it was more of the over-the-road style Max Force that, uh, had issues. Uh, talking with, uh, um, uh, Al here, uh, he's never, he's had one engine since he's had Max Forces and stuff that has ever failed because these are mostly idling around, around towns. They, they don't go down, I mean, they'll drive down the highway, but they're not driving around, they're just driving around town, so they're just idling, not having a lot of, uh, load on them, I guess, and like driving down highways and such, um...
I was looking at the, the 600 model I threw in there, do they have an option to put, where they're like a back tube to, that you, off the back, where you can like...
Yes, th- this one, if, if we were to, if we were to buy it, he will put that back tube on the back of it and he puts a, he will put a heavier water pump on it that has a hose on it so that you can clean it out, um, when you're cleaning out intakes, um, it's just like the back, you're sucking and you're power washing the intake out in the bottom.
It's just not on this one, it's just an option that we can add on to it?
He will, it will be, for this price, he, he will be putting it on.
Okay.
That's the one thing I, on these, that's one thing I love about these, is that hose on the back.
You still have to pick up the sticks.
He's still have to pick up the sticks.
Well, yes, I just seen that where they were actually back in a hole on something using that thing, and I don't know if it was a grate or an intake on ground or something. So I thought, and then, then I see these pictures and this one didn't have it, I was hoping it had that.
It will.
It will have it on.
If you ordered it, it will be on, if you ordered a new one, it comes with it.
And if we decide to do this, how long does it take to do this?
He, uh, said that if we ordered it, I let him know, he'll have it all put together, it'll be here end of next week.
And a new one equivalent to that is 335?
Yes, correct. Uh, this one comes with a year warranty, I did ask him about a two-year warranty and he said no, he says he don't even put a two-year warranty on a new one when he sells a new one.
As long as the first time.
Yeah. You know, we didn't ask him.
Why is the warranty candy?
Yeah.
Thing about that is it came out of what, Coon Rapids?
Coon Rapids.
Minnesota, sixty-one thousand people.
Yeah.
So Lakeview Iowa was a hell of a difference, that's why I'd ask again.
I can ask him again.
That's kind of conjug- to me, it's, it's important because like I said, what do we use it for, two months, you know?
Total, yeah.
Total, spring, fall.
Yeah.
Uh, and them guys, I'm sure, were having somebody in that every day, so...
Correct.
But poles are older than we were updating.
Twenty years?
Twenty years?
Something like twenty years?
Yeah.
More than that.
It'd be about twenty. And he will give us ten thousand dollars.
You don't have any hours on that?
No, I do not.
That's why I just figured how many hours a year we put on it.
See, they, and that, then the motor is what, a John Deere that runs the...
Runs the back, is it John Deere?
Runs the back, what is that, 99 horse or something?
Yes, yes.
The bear, you kind of looked up the top and you were a little concerned about what?
Well, he's got, fuel around the injectors are valve cover gasketed because there's, it's all crusty, like that thick. He said he just changed it, but I don't see it here.
Okay.
If he just changes it, it leaks a lot. There's a crust that needs to be power washed and cleaned off. Otherwise, we found two grates on horseshoe drive, I didn't know we're there.
It, it gets down there, our, our, uh, the street sweeper we have right now, those gutter roofs are, stay flat, they don't tilt.
They don't tilt.
This one tilts, gets down in there, it, it'll follow the, the, uh, angle of the gutter and just pull everything out so it doesn't, you know, like horseshoe sat there, you know, because it never, our brushes never got up in there. And now that one, round we went, ran around the other way, had a few piles we had to clean up yet, but packed it all in there.
As long as we got here, I was dead against it, but after we got done demonstrating and how I did it, I was amazed.
So you two side, side and action?
We walked behind you.
Let me walk behind you. We didn't leave a streak, we weren't quite used to that.
Yeah.
No line to follow.
There's no line to follow.
I guess I would rely on your guys' recommendation, I guess, you know, we're, we're looking at saving quite a bit of money here by getting the used one and...
I'll play devil's advocate again, this, uh, yeah, we're saving a bit of money, but, you know, another seven years, you know, I've got a fourteen-year-old. I, I'm not, you know, I'm not trying to say we shouldn't do it or, but I'm, what I'm saying is we gotta kind of do some math on it a little bit just to see what, because we're not gonna get any cheaper.
So if we do it twenty, if we do a twenty-year figuring, on the used one, it's fifteen eighty-three per month over the twenty-year, over the ten, that's over ten years because it's already ten years old. If we buy a new one, it's thirteen ninety-seven over the twenty years.
And that's what you got in term?
And that's just the base figures. So the new one is actually less per month and probably will last us with the proper maintenance and stuff, with the stainless steel tub and stuff. It lasts us a long time.
That's just it, I mean, I don't know what, what, uh, council feels about, uh, if we buy an older one, are we buying somebody's problems? They say they go through them, which I have no reason to doubt them, but, you know...
But you guys are also against this Max Force motor.
Definitely.
Not a fan.
Not a fan.
The Newz have that motor, right?
No, they have an, they have a Cummins. A Cummins, sorry, it's a Cummins.
There was a lawsuit on that Max Force motor. Yeah, but we went up to look at the cloud truck that, uh, Dean, with Dean and Whitey, that, we called some people that name. Whitey called your guy at Farther.
We had a bunch of them.
That guy says, that says Max Force turn around and run.
So if we order the new one, how long do you think it would take to get there?
It would be in the fall.
And can we get, keep ours going till then, I mean, does it need much money dumped into it?
It needs some money to, uh, as far as it needs a belt going up into it, um, needs, uh, probably some bearings replaced in it.
Before fall?
Oh, yeah.
So...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um... I lost my three thought. Um... And what do you, what is, what was repairing the old one, the cost, any idea?
I asked Al and to get it to where it should be, it could be ten thousand dollars.
Which is all we're getting for it?
Yeah. And then the guys down in, uh, mid-Iowa don't even want it.
You know, just on the, on the finance side of things, we, we put money aside for this for, this would be the second year now that we, that we've done that and at the end of June this year, we'd have ninety-five thousand dollars to set aside.
And then we just loan for the rest, is what you're saying if we do that?
If we do new, maybe we would explore, explore, uh, yeah, what, getting a loan or will it also explore lease options?
Okay. If, if we do a lease option though, you know, if you think about that, if you talk about it, annual cost, they look, they'll be on a rotation, you know, automatic rotation of lease option.
Well, I think we could probably borrow money cheaper than we could this...
True, that's always...
Yeah, I, if it was me, I'd probably notice a new one, have a nice piece of equipment around, better do a good job, that model, with that model, with whatever chassis it suits.
Are we buying negotiation with the new one or are we just taking new price?
We've, we've done nothing with it, we've gotten a, a proposal from them once, that was it.
Well, I, I think we need to go ahead and do a proposal, go ahead and sound it here.
I'd say just see where we're at, then we can...
Get a proposal with the new one and then...
We'll have some hard figures that we can determine what we want to do, just...
In my understanding, right, though, this used one is a different company than the new one?
Correct, it is, 'cause Al up there does sell, sell the new ones, but this is not his territory and he cannot sell.
Okay, so, so...
So what if we, and I don't know if that's an option, bought the used one, ordered a new one and had the trade-in value established to trade it in instead of sticking ten grand in our hole for when the new one gets there?
Yeah, I mean...
Kid, but we still can't get it from Al, right?
No, you have to buy the new one from mid-Iowa.
Well, let's see what, what they got, see what the timeframe would be for a new one for sure.
So when we talked about this before and mid-Iowa will still do this, the one that they brought up here, that new one, uh, is their demo unit. We'd get that a little bit cheaper if we ordered a new one or, let's say we wanted that one because it's already gonna have all the kinks worked out in it. We'd get that one, they would just order themselves a new one and then as soon as they got their new one, we'd get that. Demo unit's already got the kinks worked out, if there's any kinks in it and whatnot.
I hope that...
But they won't take our old one, right?
No.
So we have to put on big iron?
Yes.
We always get more money on big iron than we ever thought we would get.
Yep.
It's true, some of them are black.
Yeah.
And that one that did, that new one that did out of us, just like this one except...
It's new.
It's new. And it's got the stainless steel stuff, all that stuff.
Yep, it's got all that.
The hose on the back, the...
Get ahold of them guys and see what you can come up with.
Okay.
Just, yeah, and... You know, it's...
You got what you can do it.
I got it.
Yeah.
Got till Friday late afternoon.
Do the best you can, see what you can...
I'll have Jeff involved, okay, that sees, if you want to meet, just have access to you, Jeff.
Yep.
Okay, we have to have a financial audit, we've got some proposals to consider.
This would be the one from, from Feldman, they've done our, our auditing work, uh, for us. This would be to have a full financial audit, we planned always to, every four years, we would have a full financial audit and this is, will be the fourth year, but then it also coincides with my departures, which is appropriate to do a full audit then. Uh, price for the audit, six thousand nine forty-five.
I'll second it, we'll call.
Excuse me, Lowman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lowman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Okay, we've got to decide on our one hundred. About what the council like to do.
I'm after, to me, after hearing both proposals, you know, and, and, um, Elizabeth mentioned the fact that this would be the only one that she's working on and so forth, that we both have a pretty good experience and, um, I'd make a motion to choose Elizabeth to do our... Sure.
I'll second it.
We'll call.
Hey, Lowman.
Yes.
Lowman.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do you want me to talk with her about that, uh, that job analysis and the...
I'd say now, I, I think that this is the perfect opportunity to do this.
Absolutely.
You know, I mean, I mean, it's gonna cost us some extra money, but you gotta determine...
Most of the time we'd do...
But, and also we, I guess we need to give her some idea of what kind of structure we want to have, you know, be a higher, full-time person, two-fold type person, person, time of the ha- or a half-time.
Right.
I mean, there's different options to do different things, we just gotta find out what the scope is that could help, help K out to do, you know, so have a job description, I guess, as a script, I can say.
And is there a way that we could have K list what kind of responsibilities that she... And is there a way that we could have K list what kind of responsibilities that she could have this other person do?
Yeah, it can, we, we've had some initial.
Open the mail, that type of stuff.
Yes, well, then we'll, we'll have a, from the staff perspective, we'll have a little plan together too about, about what the potentials are. As far as, as split the job, but it would be, it would be good to, uh, get an outside look at that then too.
And then are we gonna have a committee, council committee?
You know, the way Elizabeth had talked about that is to keep on that more aggressive timeline that she wanted to work with the council committee on many of the steps. Um, of course, the, the council's kept updated along the way and obviously the entire city council's involved with, with, uh, final interviews and, and with selection of the finalists. But there's just some times along the way where, where she would just be looking for some quicker answers and would, and would look for, uh, look to work with the personnel committee from the council.
Probably needs two councilmen to help.
Two or three or?
Yeah, two.
Yeah, two.
Only two.
I, I'd volunteer for that.
What do you? I can look, Whitey, you're a talent. Yeah, I can do it.
Dale and Wade.
And me.
And the mayor.
I can't get out of the van.
You cannot. Hey, just comments for the staff there, though, that, you know, both of these consultants that we, that we talked to, they, they talked about the importance of, of interviewing staff membership, so I just know that, that you get involved in, in this selection process, uh, actually play a really important part.
It's a big step, we want everybody's input.
Yeah, um. As far as, as far as interim help then, in the, in the, in the clerk's office then, when, when I'm gone, we do have this proposal from, uh, from Midwest Assistance Program that they would be able to help out. Uh, and you saw the price on that, would, would be somewhere between seventy-eight, eighty-two dollars per hour. Uh, if, if you, we want to proceed down that, which I think it, there's a lot of merit to, to do in that. We would just look at ways that we could really optimize the hours for.
Is, is that the only company out there that does this?
The other thing that we looked at was, was retired clerks, I mean, have any luck with the retired clerks.
And there's no chance of synergies with the name breakdown? I don't know how that works, I don't know what the money deal, you know, one, audible, for example, their guy, their person come over, they see our financials compared, I don't know how that works.
I don't think they'd be in the same ballpark as what we do.
I, I agree with that, but procedures maybe, procedures is, you know.
I, then we try, we try one day a week, maybe.
Well, yeah, that's, that's where I'm going with this, if you're one or two days, we could, if we need more, then we, we have to determine. But I think what we need is to get somebody in place, because Moon's gonna come here pretty quick and, and.
I agree.
And, and, uh, so at least we know they're capable of doing it. I'm, I'm assuming now, I, I don't know for a fact, I don't know them if they walk in the door, but if they, if, time is the essence, so we can keep things relatively smooth. You know, we'll have our bumps in, in the road. Anytime you have any kind of personnel change, especially if it's upper management, that's what I call it, but.
Right.
You're always gonna have some issues no matter what, you know, so.
So you need a motion on that?
I would like to have a motion to, to hire, um, and, you know, basically to, to work with Midwest Assistance on a limited, uh, limited basis.
Let me, let me take it one step further. K, it's important to you that you kind of have a plan that'll help you out when, you know, so we know, you know, you kind of, the duties that you wanna hand off until we get everything else into place, because like I said, it's gonna be a little bit of a bumpy road for right now.
My concern is more, um, you know, having to train somebody to do something that if I've gotta train him and fix any mistakes or show him how to do it, I just will do it myself.
Well.
But I can't do it all, I get that, but I, I would like somebody to at least be able to ask questions to. And, you know, for some of his job duties, some of that kind of stuff.
But.
You know, I'm already gonna take over the payroll because I've done it before. Um, so, you know, it's just the, the council meetings and some of that stuff that.
Well, that, again, you know, you know, we got these, these packets come out on Thursday, you know, I mean, you can, I have no idea what you do, don't, don't take that wrong, I, I know you do a lot, that's all. But you gotta determine what can I give away to help you to do the?
Right.
The other stuff.
Right.
Other stuff, so that's, I guess, what I'm telling you is if you can, start formulating a, a plan. And try to determine, because when Scott's gone, you know, we've got, you know, and I'm sure we still can call Scott once in a while just to say hi and see what he's betting on and that this is all a struggle. So, but, but does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so, so I would determine, you know.
Can we wait for K to tell us when you think you need to scall?
I would think to bring her in as soon as possible.
So, so Scott can show her stuff too.
Right.
Right, right, well, you know.
Because, you know, we talked about him showing me stuff, but even that's been tough to do with.
Sure.
All the, yeah, yeah.
What, and, and do you think with all your other stuff to do, is there a possibility that we'd have hire a part-time person to come in in the interim to help you do your daily chores, go into the bank or stuff like that while Scott's even here, if there's, that person's even available?
Well, if, if we bring this company in to this class, then we got that extra person in there right now. But you wanna hire somebody to?
Well, that person's seventy-eight, eighty-two bucks an hour, where you might be able to hire somebody for eighteen bucks an hour that can help her on a part-time basis, you know, for example. And I don't know this, but like we do at the campground, you know, like a campground attendant person, a summer staff person.
I guess I, I would.
That, that's what I'm asking.
I'm leaning towards you.
Yeah.
To give us direction of what you need.
Again, my, my concern with that is, is even if they went and got the mail and opened it, I would still have to be doing the work because in order for me to show them the work, it's gonna take twice as long for them to do it than what's just gonna take me to handle.
I'm just using that as an example, but.
Yeah.
But your time may become filled up more with doing that.
Right, and, and, I mean, I, I would expect overtime. Um, I would expect that you guys would understand that in order to get everything done, it's gonna require extra hours. And I understand that myself. Um, all I'm looking for is just somebody, you know, for some of his duties that I don't understand, but I can, can ask that maybe they can step in and help with the stuff I don't understand versus the stuff that I already know how to do.
Right, we just don't wanna burn you out.
I understand that, but you're also looking at, at, you know, three to six months, not necessarily three to six years. So, I mean, yeah, I won't get a summer this summer thanks to Greg Ryan. Water Carnival and all those other things, you know, and then them not having anybody in till August or September, but, I mean, again, I understand that.
Yeah, cleanup day. Cleanup day, don't forget that.
Oh, oh, uh, let me think, uh, Memorial Weekend, garage sales.
Yes.
Scott's still here, though. At the.
So.
Yeah.
So I, I guess, I guess what we tell the guys, we'll see what they can go and start, start out part-time.
Pick them hired and.
Make, make a motion to.
On a basis, once we evaluate what we need.
Is that, is that a motion?
It is.
Sorry.
Uh, and it's basically we'll, we'll evaluate this as and as needed?
Yes.
Right.
Right.
Based on K's needs.
Here you go.
We'll call.
Okay, Frank.
Yes.
Wolman.
Beckman. Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second? Please adjourn, thank you. Takes me ten yards to stand up.
Oh.